Call the meeting to order. We are, everybody is here except for Councilman Kerr and Councilman Fairbanks. First is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas 2023 is the 151st anniversary of the holiday, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas the trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, now therefore, I, Robert Morgan, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023 as Arbor Day in the City of Beatrice. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Witness my hand in the seal of the City of Beatrice on the 17th day of April 2023. Hi, Gary, I think you're here.
Well, I'd like to invite the public, Nick, on Arbor Day, a celebration we're going to have on that Veterans Memorial Park, we're going to be planting two trees, parting with the city, Keep Beatrice Beautiful, and the Lorbeet Blue of NRD, to plant these trees. And we've got school kids invited, ARBA Foundation's invited. You're going to speak.
I'm going to be there.
So, public welcome to Ken, and I think everybody gave a formal invitation to the council, so.
That's 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Very good.
April 28th.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room, accessible to members of the public. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilman so requests. Item A: Approve Agenda as Submitted. Item B: Receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C: Receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D: Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April 3rd, 2023 as on file with the city clerk's office. Item E: Approval of the treasure report of claims in the amount of $746,965.98. Approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $86,383.98. Approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. Approval of Beatrice Plus application for the pickleballs, Beatrice, Nebraska Organization in the amount of $9,000 for wind screens to be attached to the fences surrounding the pickleball courts at Chautauqua Park as recommended by the Board, Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Approval of special designated license for Tall Tree Tastings LLC for a staff appreciation event on May 9th, 2023 from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Beatrice Community Hospital and Health Center, 4800 Hospital Parkway, Beatrice, Nebraska. Approval of pay request number one to Myers Construction Incorporated in the amount of $415,244.84 for the Water Main Replacement Project as part of the 2021 Water SRF Project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of pay request number two to Pavers Incorporated in the amount of $136,952.58 for the Mill and Overlay 2022 project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of final pay request to Lamow Plumbing Incorporated in the amount of $4,386.21 for the AL Green Subdivision, Lot 6 through 8 Sanitary Sewer Extension Project 2022 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval for pay request number two to Judd Brothers Construction Company in the amount of $612,168.52 for the Water Transmission Line Project as part of the 2021 Water SRF Projects as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of pay request number one to Olson in the amount of $5,054.59 for the Court Street Corridor Master Plan Project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of final pay request to Shown Roofing LLC in the amount of $114,449.39 for the re-roofing of the Beatrice Public Library. Resolution Number 7050 granting the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce and their designees permission to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise upon city property located in Charles Park, 5th Street, between High Street and Ella Street, the alley to the south, and the parking lot near the Carnegie Building, 4th Street, between Court Street and High Street, Beatrice Water Park, and Chautauqua Park as part of the annual Homestead Days events on the dates of June 21st, 2023 through June 25th, 2023. Resolution Number 7051 entered into lease with Beatrice GMC Real Estate LLC, doing business as Premier Chevrolet Buick GMC Beatrice for the purpose of using a portion of the city owned right away. Resolution Number 7052 granting Joseph Bilzbach and his designees permission to serve alcohol beverages upon city property located at the West Scott, West Scott Street Ballfields on Saturday, June 17th, 2023 from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. as part of the Solstice Gravel Grinder. Resolution Number 7053 granting Beatrice Wrestling Club Incorporated and their designees permission to serve alcoholic beverages and to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise upon the city property located at the Tabernacle in Chautauqua Park on Saturday, May 6th, 2023 from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. as part of their cornhole tournament. And Item T: Approval of special designated license for the Beatrice Wrestling Club Incorporated for a cornhole tournament, May 6th, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the Tabernacle in Chautauqua Park. Anything when people would like to have taken off?
O.
Okay.
Mayor, I really don't have a question about, well, maybe we just should take it off.
G. Which one?
G, please.
G?
Yep, good.
Anything else? Mr. McLean?
I move the items listed on the consent agenda, with the exception of Items G and O, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes 6-0.
I move that Item G, listed on this consent agenda, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Okay, Terry?
I'm just curious, maybe everybody else knows this, I just don't. Is that like a quarterly balance, do you know, T?
Yes.
So, once a quarter, we write off those bad debts?
Yep.
And that's just people, 9/11 calling in, and we send people out, and then they just don't pay?
Right, so those would be the people who don't have insurance that you end up writing off.
You want to, I was going to pull that off as well, because I was asked about it. You want to explain the process of how we get to that? I mean, we, you send it to collection associates, they do what they can do, and then we have a balance left, correct?
Correct. So, usually what happens is, once we render services, we send bills out, usually three times to the individual who got the services. After those three attempts to collect are unsuccessful, and they've not made any contact with us, there's been no communication, there's no nothing, we then forward it on to collection associates. They then start their collection process on it. If they're successful, we get 50 cents for every dollar they recover. At the end of that, whatever they don't collect, you know, also, we write it off as soon as we pass it on to collections. And then if we happen to collect anything back, we add it back on at that point, so.
Is there frequent flyers in this process?
Yes. Yes, there are.
My aunt pays, though.
I'm.
Any other discussion?
Not on this.
Okay. Your vote, please. That passes 6-0.
I move that Item O, listed on the consent agenda, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Terry?
I just wanted to make, I don't quite recall what the, does this amount include the deduction for the offset to buy us?
Yes, so the original contract price, I believe, was $134.
Okay.
We had $21,000 in liquidated damages, so yes, it is less those liquidated damages.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. Okay, public hearing. We have a public hearing for the purpose to consider the rezoning application of Travis to Coldstick, if I've mispronounced, I'm sorry, for that certain real property lying directly east of and adjacent to, what's that?
So, you can.
Yeah, finish it. Real property commonly known as 2420 North 6th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, 68310, all located in the northern half of the northeast quarter of Section 27, Township 4, North Range 6, east of the PM, Gage County, Nebraska, Gage County, Partial ID 004297000, to be rezoned from agriculture to general commercial.
So, if you look at the map that we have pulled up for you here, you're looking at Sixth and Sergeant Street, you're going between the bike trail that the city owns there and was the back of, Verizon's out there now, Pizza Hut's out there, a couple of those different retail shops there are located along the highway. You can see it's that pink area that shaded there, south of Sergeant Street. Recently, this property was purchased, the gentleman buying it wishes to rezone it from ag to general commercial. He wants to install some storage units, and so those are allowed in a general commercial. You can see everything to the west of there is already general commercial, so it's not out of compliance to have this extend further to the east there. And so that's the request, and I believe we've heard nothing at playing and zoning or at city council or at the city level on this. Playing zoning recommended approval of it tonight, so that's what's being asked of you tonight. There's just a little bit of area in there he can build, much of it's in the floodplain, but there's a small portion in right along the road, their Sergeant Street, that he can actually build.
Discussion from the council. Anybody from the public? Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:13 p.m.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. Resolution Number 7054, executing contract number 23, UGPR-56, between the City of Beatrice, State of Nebraska, and the Western Area Power Administration to export the city's REX and WAPA's account as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move that Resolution Number 7054 be passed and adopted.
Second.
All right, so first, let's go over a couple of acronyms. WAPA is Western Area Power Administration, we acquire a portion of our energy from WAPA. We've had a contract to get a portion of our energy from WAPA for decades. A contract extends through 2050 to acquire some energy from them. REX are renewable energy certificates or renewable energy credits, they're kind of used interchangeably. So, WAPA generates their power through hydro dams, and that is considered to be green energy. And from that now, what is produced are REX. Those REX are basically just certificates that people can use to help offset their carbon emissions on a sheet of paper. It doesn't help in real life, but that's the way the game works these days. And so, you may have heard of REX before, we're part of Cottonwood, Cottonwood generates REX, we're able to sell those REX to other companies that want to use them to help with their carbon score. Unfortunately, the ones that we get from WAPA, we cannot sell, it's part of the federal government's rules, so we'll acquire these REX, they don't cost us anything, we'll put them into our account, we'll hold them, and then if and when we end up either ourselves want to retire them and use them to help our credit score, or if we have a customer of ours who wants to use them, we'll be able to provide those to that customer. But we cannot sell them on the open market like we do the ones from Cottonwood.
Discussion from the public. Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. Couple of ordinances tonight. First one is, A for Agenda, is ordinance to amend the zoning map for the City of Beatrice, Nebraska by changing the zoning of the property lying directly east of and adjacent to real property commonly known as 2420 North 6th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, 68310, all located in the north half of the northeast quarter of Section 27, Township 4, North Range 6, east of the PM, Gage County, Nebraska, Gage County, Partial ID 004297000, to be rezoned from agriculture to general commercial.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-10, the title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. I'll read ordinance number 23-10 by number only the first time, number 23-10 the second time, and number 23-10 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 23-10 be passed and approved.
Second.
Any further discussion needed after the public hearing? From the public? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. Next, we have an ordinance vacating all of lots 13 and 14 in the north 200 feet of lots 15, 16, 15 and 16, and the east 50 feet of the north 200 feet of lot 17, all in Marshall Industrial Track, Section 3, Township 4, North, Range 6, east of the 6th PM, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-11, the title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. I'll read ordinance number 23-11 by number the first time, 23-11 the second time, and 23-11 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 23-11 be passed and approved.
Second.
Discussion.
So, we're at the truck stop north of town on Highway 77. You can see from the picture there, basically what they want to do is take those two parcels that are drawn there and split them. One is the gas station itself, and one is some truck sales, stuff like that, they run out the other one. So, they've asked to split these two parcels. They're just inside of our zoning jurisdiction, which is why it comes before you tonight. So, the first thing you have before you is vacating some of the lots that are out there, and then the next ordinance that will come before you is a replating of those two parcels out there.
Seeing none from the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing none? Your vote, please. And that passes 6-0. What was in my place there?
Let me see.
Yep.
Bottom of four.
Bottom of four.
Two left here.
All right. Okay. This is an ordinance approving the plat of the Diamond T Ranch Incorporated subdivision. Introduce this ordinance.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-12, the title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
I'll second it.
A motion to suspend the rule is not debatable. That passes 6-0.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-12 and be passed and approved.
Second.
So, if you look at the map here, you see where the new lines are drawn, just as we kind of showed on the last one. Do you want to think really to note is that the Lagoon Pond is on Lot 1 out there, but if you look on Lot 2, we made sure that they had an easement to be able to access that, so that in the future, if they did try and happen to change hands, Lot 2 would still have access and be able to put a septic system or sanitary sewer system in out there, otherwise they don't have enough area for the state rules, so. Other than that, those are pretty standard plat.
Your vote, please. That passes 6-0. Okay, public forum. Now's the time for the public forum. Anybody here for the public forum tonight? Have a seat, and if I could just have you say your names and your address?
People call me Big Chris, I don't know why. But my address is 79, what is it, my address?
7779 East US Highway 136, Beatrice.
There you go, this is my wife, she knows everything about everything.
I'm Heidi Bell. My name's Chris Bell.
I just want to say that you guys are doing a good job. It's been two years you guys took over Mars. At first, I didn't like it one bit, you know? So, I got the opportunity to buy 2223 Court Street, and I closed on it in May. Everybody does, and they, there's a lot of mixed feelings about the manager that was the leaser of it. So now I'm, I'm running the bowling alley. It's Ten Pins Fun Center, I got my EIN number, I've got everything going together, I just appreciate you guys. And if anything you guys can do to help me, I mean, this is the first time I've actually, I want to get back to Beatrice, that's why I bought it. My family gave to this town since 1975, and I'm not going anywhere. I know some, some people don't like me, but I have a long ways to go. I got an alcohol license coming towards you guys, I just wanted to introduce me and the bowling alley, I mean, we got, I'm not really into that league type of thing, I'm more into families having fun. And this guy here, I'm going to hold him to that lunch. Got the best cheeseburgers in town, I got the best chicken wings, they're just like the racetrack. So, you guys would think about that alcohol license, that'd be really good. I've worked with Taylor, Taylor, you, we went, we, we've talked about maybe me not doing it, and then Herb said he was going to make a parking lot out of it, and we got enough parking lots in Beatrice.
We appreciate you keeping it around.
You bet.
I just want to make sure that everybody has fun, and I'm not calling the police to handle problems, so I'll just handle it myself. You guys bail me out. But I've done, I've done bouncing before at other bars in Lincoln. When I lived in Lincoln, I was a lot younger, a lot thinner. So, I've only had one situation so far, and I didn't call the police, I just told them that he was banded for life, he was being mean to another kid, a child, and no drama, you know? So, I've served with the sanitary garbage, I've served Beatrice, and I plan on making sure that that service still goes with the bowling alley, you know? But we have a webpage, what is that?
We have a webpage, we got a Facebook page.
I'll tell you what it is, yeah?
Ten Pins Fun Center LLC.
Oh, I see. Okay, you guys better all come for lunch.
You got it.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Chris, I would like to say thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Well, you're welcome.
This town needs a bowling alley. You know where it's been in the last three or four years, so this isn't something new that you, you're stepping into.
Thirty-two, thirty-two weeks I've worked there under, under the old manager, and I'm learning mechanics. Tell you what, they're not a garbage truck, there's more springs and bolts and doohickeys, I don't know what they're called, but I know they break, and people want them fixed right away, and so.
Well, we wish you luck, and if there's anything we can do to help you succeed, please let us know.
Well, I just put in an $8,000 sewer system, so. Ouch. Hey, my toilet's flushed, though.
Mayor, hold on. Chris?
Yes, sir.
Well, besides keeping the business here, which is obviously great for the City of Beatrice, I think other places should take note on how you handled this, it came before the council to talk about your liquor license and actually get to know somebody. It goes a long way when it comes to voting yes or no on what we're going to do, and so, I appreciate that, so.
I've got you guys' back 100%. I mean, I've always supported Beatrice, I love this town, always have, ever since I was knee-high to a grasshopper, you know, and so.
So, Chris, are you?
Well, oh, did you tell them about the arcade?
Go ahead.
Oh, I didn't tell them about the arcade? I got selective brain memories, I got skee ball coming for the kids, I got racing games coming for the kids, I got, it's racing games, I got darts going to be going for the league people or whoever they want to play. I got four brand-new, they said it costs, what, $40,000 a table? I got four brand-new pool tables coming. Well, so, I got claw machines coming, I got adult.
Skill games.
I call them casino games, they pay out. But I got them coming. I'm working with Jones Insurance, I was talking to him, she doesn't know nothing about it, but I was thinking about axe throwing, maybe something outside.
No.
What?
No.
Okay, but.
You can chop off your finger.
You already did that with my manolin. Have you guys ever used a manolin?
Mandolin.
What is it called?
Mandolin.
Whatever she said. You take this thing and you slice it like this, we got our health, food health permit we got, we got it all checked out. So, you take this lemon and you put it on this little doohickey thingy, and you go like this. Now, I'm a garbage man, that means, garbage means fast, everything's fast. Faster you get it done, the faster you get the reward. So, I'm sitting here, and I'm telling you what, I'm going fast, and I took out a chunk of that finger.
Ouch.
And man, I'll tell you what, I screamed worse than a girl. Wow, I had blood shooting out of that thing, I told my wife, I was just, so, I showed her, to her. What does she do? She goes over to that squirt bottle, it has that, what is that called? What is that stuff called?
German.
Yeah, she put that alcohol on there, right, blessed opening. Took my man card away.
Chris, thank you very much.
You betcha. You guys have a good night.
Chris, you want this back, or?
No, you guys make copies, you pass them out, and is that the 1011 news guy?
Yeah.
All right, we're going down to discussions and reports. First off, the Streets Department. First off, the Streets Department overview, Jason.
Yeah. Here you go.
Good evening, gentlemen. So looking at the Beatrice Street Department, we've got eight full-time employees, we've got one working foreman, as well as with seven full-time employees. Currently, Paul Valentine is my working foreman. We've got 150 years combined experience between the nine of us out there right now, and so, you know, we had a little bit of turnover this year due to retirements, we had a 40-year man retire, really took a hit out of the department that you really feel it's just, it's, it's really tough to replace 40 years of experience, there's just nothing you can do to take care of that, so. But I've got a great group of guys. Without the group of guys that I have, we wouldn't be able to get near the work done that we do. And so, all of them care an awful lot about the streets, they take pride in what they City streets that we have, currently, we've got the 325 lane miles and the 34 miles of gravel. The 34 miles of gravel, we take care of with two John Deere motor graders that we have, and the guys will run around, take care of the gravel streets as needed, we haul gravel, haul rock to them. We've also got alleys that we maintain throughout the city of, most of our alleys are in the northeast corner, but it seems like we do have a few in Glenover, a few on the west side, and I think a couple in the south that are city alleys, so. But most of them are up here that we see in this area up in here, so. But it does give you an idea with 325 total lane miles to take care of the city of Beatrice. Clean City is an event we've got coming up here, first week of May, it's something we've been going on now since 1989, it's been a great, a great deal for the city of Beatrice with the amount of material that we clean and the amount of material that my guys pick up every single year. We'll come right after this Clean City event, I'll come back and give an update of where we're at with the Clean City, kind of give an idea of locations. Every year, we try to tweak things so that we can better what we do, and, you know, we started out with, with cards that we would, we would go through, like a Rolodex cards, they'd get written down by hand. Now it's all going online, we've got a really nice program, we've got two loaders that run through town, they've got iPads, we can follow at any one given time, we can find out. Loaders went by Terry's house, we've picked up his material, if there's.
Excuse me?
The loaders went by, so the loaders went by Tim's house, and we've picked up Tim's material.
Sounds better.
So we picked up his material if there was material to be picked up or not, so. We've got a really nice program, every single year, we look to improve it, we were five days a week, we're down to three days a week. The green area that you see right here, this is our Monday area, even though it is probably the smallest area in size, it is the largest number of stops that we will have over the three days. Every single year, our first stop is our largest one. Tuesday is going to be the area of Hoyle Trailer Park, it's going to be the Glenover area, the west side, and pretty much everything west of Highway 77. Wednesday again is the, is the, everything in the country club area, around the old hospital, and then everything that is east of 19th is going to be our Wednesday. Thursday is a day that we go back and we pick up anything that may have been registered and may have slipped through the cracks, and we'll go back and pick something up like that, so. But I consider Clean City a success, when we can go through, we can have very few complaints, and I don't have any accidents or injuries with my crew. Clean City comparisons, it's what we've had in the past, you can see the dollar amounts we've spent. Last, let's see, 2020 was our biggest year dollar amount-wise, at $18,780. This would have been a fairly good-sized year, you can see our number of locations was at 1,249, that was not the largest amount of stops we've had, though, 2015 and 2016, we had a lot of stops. We found out then that we were getting a lot more items put out that did not have to do with Clean City, and we were picking up smaller items. This is when we really started to look at what it was and tighten the screws down on Clean City and make improvements. Some of the things that my guys do with, on the jobs, what we have to do for this, for Beatrice, this is a catch basin that we replaced on 7th Street between Court and Ella, on the east side of 7th Street there. This is a storm water catch basin that you'll see, a lot of times you'll see the inlets up along the gutter, water would go down into this box, a storm, the storm drain box. Like I said, these are forms, my guys will go down, they'll form it in, we'll repour our own, and then we repour lids, reinforced with rebar, and then we will reset our own lids. All of this work, my guys are, will pretty much do themselves. Ditch, drainage, cleanage, and seeding, this is a, a job that we took care of, this is south of Grable, between Grable and Tate, we did this, this last, last year, had a lot of water that was running down, going over the top of Grable Street, we went down and cleaned it all out, put bank stabilization in it, and reseeded the drainage. Decorative bridge rails, we were very lucky, my guys were able to be a big, large, a large part with the decorative bridge rail installation on both bridges. Everything went superb. Not all of the measurements were exactly correct, we had to do a little fudging here and there, but my guys handled it top-notch, they really did. Anytime we had something that came up, my guys were able to look at it, adjust to what we needed to make it work, and I think the bridge rails are just an excellent addition to the city of Beatrice. The lights that are installed on them, everything, I really like what it looks like, and my guys are very proud that they're a part of it. Crack sealing, all of our roads that we take care of throughout the city of Beatrice that are hard-surfaced, will have to be crack sealed at one time or another. Crack sealing is melted tar that we take care of and apply on the cracks when they're dry and clean. Right here, this is a stretch of roadway on South Center Street, there's a very short stretch of asphalt. Before we armor coat our streets, we'll always go through and crack seal the large cracks in it to try and help seal the roadway up. So this year, we've got a large amount of armor coats that we take care of this summer, and so we've got a large amount of streets that we'll crack seal. Along with that, we'll also come back and crack seal some of the newer asphalt streets that we've done within the last five or six years, and make certain that all of them are in good shape. Concrete replacement, guys will take care of that, they do a lot of this ourselves. This is a spot that was a couple of years ago, we did this on 2nd Street, this is right north of Grant, looking north, when we replaced this. My guys do an absolute tremendous job of doing concrete. I, I was with the state before I came to the city, and when I came over here, I just could not believe it, the, the quality of work that the concrete patches that they do. We, over the last 10 years, we've really increased the size of the projects that we'll do, just within the last couple of weeks, we've already had a 100-yard pour, which is a fairly substantial pour, we've already done 100 yards in one pour this year, so, it's a, it's a large pour. My guys do a really good job, along with concrete ADA ramps. Asphalt replacement, we're getting, I think we're getting pretty good at that, when you only do it for a couple of months a year, it's, just when you start to get good at it, you, you stop again for the winter, and, and you kind of have to relearn a little bit of it, but up top here, we've got our lady, our skid loader that we do, we go and we mill out small patches. Here is a grader that's being used to lay an asphalt patch in front of the new fire department, and this is one of our trucks, this is a Mack dump truck with a single axle in the rear, this is about a seven-and-a-half to eight-yard truck, is what it is, and currently we've got five Mack trucks in our fleet, we've got two other trucks that are just waiting on the rotation to go in, so we will have a total of seven trucks. Mosquito fogging and sweeping, again, our mosquito fogger, all of my guys that apply mosquito pesticide are certified with their pesticides license, and, and we go out and we try to do mosquito spraying before, pardon me, before homestead days, before the 4th of July, we'll try and do another one again right before Labor Day, and there somewhere, and then usually in October, that's when if you're going to find mosquitoes that are carrying West Nile, they're going to be your lake mosquitoes, which are your October mosquitoes. And so that's when we really try to hold off and do our fourth spray of the year sometime then, so. And as for sweeping, we've got two sweepers, one of them is a 2008 Elgin, Elgin Eagle, and the other one is a 2000, and, I'm sorry, one is a 2012, we traded the eight in, so one's a 2012, and the other one's like a 19. So we do have two sweepers that we sweep through town with. Again, the northeast corner of town usually is our heaviest area for leaves, but we do make loops around town trying to keep everything clean. Snow emergency routes, as you can see on the map, we've got snow emergencies, and we've got snow priorities. The downtown area, this is on 5th Street here, we're ridging everything and blowing our snow into the back of a roll-off truck here, we take it, haul it down to First and Ella and deposit the snow down there. You can see the routes that we have. Currently, we break the city of Beatrice up into five quadrants, and I have five operators that will run all the time in trucks, so one operator knows his area is this northeast corner, another operator knows that this is his area, and another operator knows, and so on, and so on. The two grader operators, they run the downtown, run the intersections and ridge everything downtown. When the graders are not needed, less than two inches of snow, or we can get by without the graders, they'll jump in the seventh, the sixth and seventh truck, and they'll run where needed, so. Snow advisory routes, again, another picture of us ridging snow, snow advisory is just in the downtown district. Holiday lighted parade is something my guys are very proud of, it's one of our trucks that we changed into Santa Claus's sleigh here the last couple of years, and we've got reindeer that, we got really lucky, and we found these, I found one wooden reindeer out at the landfill, and we were able to salvage him and use him as a template, and so this is something my guys are really proud of, so. Anyways, that's the end of our show. Like I say, the Street Department is very, is different than, than any other department. We do not get our tax base, we don't get anything from property taxes. My budget for the Street Department is just shy of $3 million. That is picked up by sales tax vehicle, it's 30% of 1% of sales tax, it is done by gas tax, it's also done by lane miles through the state, there's a formula that they send us through the Highway Authority Fund, that we get our funds through them, that's where we get the most of it, is a little over $1 million that we'll get from the federal government through that, and so, if you guys have any questions.
I do got a question, Jason.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a method to spray along the trail?
We do not take care of that, that is something that Public Properties does. If we had to, we could, because we do have a UTV. A couple of years ago, three or four years ago, we had a councilman ask us about dandelions up north, had a lot of dandelions on, in between the access roads and the highways. So we rigged up a UTV that we have with a boom sprayer behind it, and now my guys will go out, in fact, they'll be doing that here in the next, probably the next week, they'll be out spraying a material or a chemical right now for dandelions. And so if we had to, it would easily fit down through there, I want to say it's a 10-foot boom, total width that we could run through there, and we can also pick it up, go through our, our bollards if we had to to get by, but we could if we had to.
I guess maybe I should have, that's for mosquitoes.
Oh, I'm sorry, for mosquitoes. We can, our truck, we can run down the ride of, pardon me, we can run down the trail and spray, it's just something that, I believe, I want to say maybe two years ago, we had extra spray left at the end of the year, and we sprayed from Mead Lumber North to Sargent, but we have, have never had to do that in the past. Yes, sir.
Over the years, we've watched how, how Clean City's gone up and gone up and gone up, and last year went down significantly. Were you ever really able to put any sort of a quantitative thought on that, or are we just kind of going to wait and see if this year will be similar to last year, or will, will it go back up?
You know, it's, it's hard to say, it really is, you know, we, we had a shorter span in between Clean Cities this last time, I want to say because of COVID, we went in October, a little bit of that was because Mars was first starting in April, and, and so we were trying to make certain that Mars was up and running, and so we kind of skipped on that spring, and then we did it in October, and then we came back right around again, and we did it in May of this last year again, so we kind of had a, a shorter timeframe in between Clean Cities. I would really like to say that our numbers are going to go down, but over the last, what, 23, 30-some years, our numbers have been relatively stable. I would imagine our numbers are going to stay the same to what they've been previously.
If we can keep that around 10, that'd be fabulous.
That would be nice.
Jason, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to compliment you in the snow removal, I know over the years, you guys, your crew does a tremendous job, you do a good job. How do you decide when to run de-icer, is there a temperature?
De-icer, we look at whether it's going to rain or not. If it's going, if, if a storm is going to come in as rain, we try to hold off on it. If it's going to be a cold storm where we look like we're going to get some sleet or a small amount of snow, our de-icer is perfect for that, because we'll go out there, we'll put that stuff down during working hours where I'm paying my guy a standard rate, and that'll actually increase the amount of time that we, that we, extend it so that we don't have to come in so early. It may start snowing at 5 o'clock, but that, that material's dry, it's, it's, it's starting to activate, it's starting to melt, and it will melt that first three-quarters of an inch of snow before we really have to come out, and so it, it saves me on the overtime, plus by having that material down, it tends to really work from the bottom up, we can put a little bit of salt down, and what, what I've really noticed is that by putting liquid down and then by putting salt on the top, we're able to reduce the amount of salt that we use total for the storm itself.
You do a great job, though.
Thank you.
I just wanted you to know that you spoke about the bridges next to UTVs, it's the number-one thing that I receive comments about from everybody that talks to me, okay? So I'm, I'm really happy that we did that, too. Please pass on to your guys that we're really proud of the job they do, they do a great job.
They do.
They just do, we have a good Street Department.
I do, I have an exceptional crew.
And it comes from the top, it does, so appreciate you, too, bud.
Appreciate it.
Jason, one last thing is, will we, will we power wash those, or will we try, have you given any thought as to how we're going to get some of that dust off of those?
We washed them one time this last year. We do have a, a tank that we put in the back of our concrete truck that we use for water, we use it to wash off our concrete tools, and so this last year, we went out and we did spray off the rails one time. So my guess is, you start to see cobwebs at a certain time of the year where they're really floating in the air, and those bridge rails really attract it, so we'll probably go out, and I'm, my guess is that's something we're going to have to do at least once a year, where we're going to go out and wash them down.
Did it work well when you did it?
Not too bad.
Good.
Jason, thank you.
You bet.
You guys do a great job, so I appreciate it very much. Okay, me on discussion, there's a City Administrator's Monthly Report.
Yeah, you have the report there in front of you, just a couple of highlights. First off, tomorrow, the waterfall proposals are due at 10:00 AM, so we'll open those and start seeing what those come in, and hopefully be able to bring something back to this body for recommendation fairly soon thereafter. Also, next week, or this week, hopefully, we'll get out the bid, the 13th Street project that goes from Beaver to Oak, that concrete reconstruction project has been on design table here for a while, but hopefully goes out for bid here shortly. And then, we talked quite a few times about the lead and copper rule out there, right? Federal government made us go out and do a survey. We're at about 95% completed, though. Water Department unfortunately has had a few guys on light duty for different, a result of different things, and so we've been able to have some of those guys go door-to-door, those who had not filled out their information for us yet, and we say, we're about 95% done with that complete survey, so we will probably at least be a year ahead of time, so, which is very good, the guys are doing a good job on that, getting that completed, so. Other than that, happy to answer any questions, anybody has?
Just, I just say a general comment, I think the, the crew that's doing the downtown construction of the water lines are doing a really pretty good job, I think they're staying out of a lot of people's way. They'll be pulling in a number of, of lines there, and as Tobias tells me, when they start putting the taps, they'll still be a little bit of pain, but they're a really pretty conscientious group, and so we're very happy that they're doing the job. Okay. We will now go into executive session.
I move the city of Beatrice goes into closed session at 7:49 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiation.
I move the city of Beatrice goes into closed session at 7:49 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
Sorry, shoot.
Your vote? And the 6-0.